... meeting in order of the Blackhawk County Supervisors for August 21st, 2018. Will call Helen.
Layland?
Here.
Little?
Here.
Magsman?
Here.
Schwartz?
Here.
White?
Here. Have a moment of silence to reflect on our actions of the day. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have the agenda received those proposals. Move to second any discussion. On favor, I?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Public comments? Anybody from the public like to comment on anything other than what's on the agenda? Seeing on claims of payments, claims of payments for the county?
The county's expenditures this week total 783,098 dollars and nineteen seven eight three zero nine eight point one nine.
Move to approve.
Second.
Move to the second any discussion. This is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Mr. Magsman?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Ms. Layland?
Yes.
Mr. Little?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next resolution to pay the bills for Country View.
The Country View expenditures that will be paid this week total 342,734 dollars and seventy-nine cents, three four two seven three four point seven nine. This includes the June payment to the county for benefits and other expenditures. We're still holding on to July, which is about 300,000. They currently have about 800,000 in their account, and we just want to make sure that in the future we have enough for payroll, so.
Move to approve.
Second.
Move to the second discussion on this item. This is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Ms. Layland?
Yes.
Excuse me. Mr. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Magsman?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is a presentation by Mark Durban with ACOM regarding the Northeast Industrial Access Study. Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Well, thanks for having me here. Again, my name is Mark Durban. I'm the project manager for the Northeast Industrial Planning Study. I think a lot of you are familiar with the premise of this study. At one time, I think, you know, years back, it was kind of the northeast bypass. And so what's happened through the years, through some of the involvement of the Blackhawk County, obviously, one of the principal players in this whole study was Dick King. And if you guys recall, Dick was one of the principal guys out there raising concerns about the issues in the northeast industrial area due to high truck traffic and traffic on county roads. And he brought this issue up, and so through the years, it's kind of developed. And so what I'd like to do, we are going to have a public information meeting on September 20th. The purpose of my presentation today is to get the supervisors a little bit of information because when we start advertising for the public information meeting, you're going to get some questions from constituents. So we just want you to have a few tools, but the main focus, though, is to get everybody there on September 20th to present this presentation to the whole public. So with that, I'll start going in here. I did kind of give you a little introduction of some of the things that's kind of out there in that industrial area, but one of the things that's been developed is that Intercog has developed a partnership with Blackhawk County, Evansdale, Elkhorn Heights, Raymond, the City of Waterloo, to develop a study to look at the issues in the northeast industrial area. And so as you can see on the screen there, this is, these are the partners that I was just referring to. I forgot to mention Iowa Department of Transportation is also integral in this study as well. And so Intercog developed that partnership, and then they hired AECOM to lead the study. We got involved at the beginning of 2017 and have been going through a series of advisory committee meetings. We've had 14 advisory committee meetings throughout 2017 and 2018. You can see on the screen there, that's the individuals that we have involved. We have Kathy Nicholas, Brian Brennan. Linda has been coming to a few meetings if she has time. We appreciate her involvement. And we have Evansdale, Iowa DOT Representatives, Raymond, and Waterloo. And so during these meetings, we've been going through the process of studying the area out there. And so what I would like to do is just give you a little bit of update where we're at, and then what we've done in the study to date. I'll kind of go through some alternatives, and then at the end, I'll touch on the schedule and where we're going. So this is a slide that you'll see, the northeast industrial area. And one of the things you'll notice is that what we're focusing on is trying to provide improved access to the industrial area where Tyson and John Deere and a lot of the large industries are in our metro area, and trying to improve that access to the major highway corridors like 218, Highway 63, US 20, and Interstate 380. So, you know, how do you get improved access to that focused area where there's a lot of freight and a lot of goods and services being moved in and out of the metro area? And so one of the things that we've looked at is what are some of the issues that's occurring out there because of the trucks trying to access this area with the freight trying to get there? So one of the things that we noticed is that, obviously, there's truck traffic on primary and secondary local roads. And so there's truck embargoes that you're witnessing out there, Newell Street, Elkhorn Road, Gilbertville Road in Elkhorn and Evansdale. Those have embargoed roads, and that's a symptom of what's going on in the industrial area, trying to limit the truck traffic in certain areas because of concerns to impacts to the roads and safety concerns as well. So, you know, that's what's happening out there. The next thing you'll notice is that it's beaten up some of our local roads out there. I mean, this picture shows is that we've got some rutting going on, and it's really taken a toll on some of our county roads. And this is, again, this is what Dick King noticed, you know, maybe 20 years ago, that this is an issue that needs to be addressed. And so when you see these percentages of 23%, typically on a county road, you're dealing with 5% to 10% trucks. So this is two to four times as much truck traffic that you typically expect on a county Another large issue and imminent issue that we have to deal with is the railroad separating the highways getting to the northeast industrial area. So one of the major railroad corridors is the CN Railroad that parallels Dubuque Road. And so what happens when we have a large amount of train traffic, it does inhibit freight moving into the northeast industrial area, causes some backups and some issues with delays. So that's one of the issues that, that's kind of like a little bit of an overview of our larger issues. We did have a number of other issues that we explored, but I just wanted to touch on When we are starting to explore some of the other issues, what we did is we'd like to get out there and try to figure out what's going on with the freight, right? And so we had a series of interviews with the major industries out in the area. And so we conducted interviews with Tyson and John Deere and some of the truck stops along Evansdale and Plaza Drive, trying to figure out what ways they access the major highway corridors and what, you know, how do they move their freight in the area? And so one of the things that came out of this is that almost 60% of their truck traffic from these major industries likes to go south and access US 20 and 380. So they want to get that access improved. But Tyson did note that a lot of their product does come from the north, so a lot of the hogs does come from the north, some Highway 63, and tries to get to the northeast industrial area from the north. So, but a lot of the product going out likes to go to the south route. So that's some of the items that we kind of gleaned from our interviews. Other things that we did is we actually analyzed most of the major intersections in the northeast industrial area. We looked at traffic, turning volumes, safety review, and looked at each intersection and tried to evaluate what's going on, exactly what's going on as far as delays and so forth. We also looked at doing some alternative developments. And so when we develop our alternatives, we look at, you know, what the future traffic would, how it would impact these future alternatives. And so what I would like to do is kind of review some of these alternatives that we've developed in the study. So when I start talking about alternatives, one of the things I want to point out is that this study will provide conceptual recommendations, which will be used to guide the future planning and development of projects in the study area. So what we're doing here is providing conceptual recommendations. So the next step above the one we're right now would be a NEPA document or an environmental document, which would identify a preferred alternative. And so what our study is going to do is look at some recommendations that for future study. And so when we start looking at these alternatives, we have looked at a lot of alternatives out there. These are just some of the ones we decided to present to the public at this point. So one of the first alternatives that we always look at is what's called a no-build alternative. So what happens if we don't do anything? What will happen to the area as far as future traffic growth and how will that affect the area? So we will research that and provide information in our final report. So the next phase up is that we actually looked at not doing just new alignments, like a brand-new bypass or something. We wanted to look at improving capacity to certain areas. And so the first step of our study is looking at capacity improvements to certain corridors. And what I mean by capacity improvements, that means adding lanes, adding turn lanes at certain intersections, allowing traffic to flow a little more freer than it does today. And then the next step up would be partial or new alignments. And these typically have a higher price tag, right? And it takes a little bit more for those partial and new alignments to develop, and those would typically need a little bit more public involvement and more environmental study. So with that, I will start just showing you some of our, and you can kind of follow along in your handouts that I gave you, and so you can see a little better detail on what these alternatives entail. But the first one is that I want to show to you today is the capacity improvements of Evansdale and Plaza Drive. And so what that is existing right now is you have, I like to call it a dirty four, but it's dirty four. So what it is, is we've got about three to four lanes in that corridor. What we're proposing here is that we would have about five lanes with turn lanes at each intersection. And that's typically from the westbound ramps of the interchange north through Plaza Drive. And that would give you a capacity, allow acceleration and deceleration of trucks and give you better queuing for turning truck traffic. There's a signal at Doris Drive, that's an existing signal. Due to the traffic projections, we're looking at adding a signal at the eastbound ramp intersection with Evansdale Drive. And if I can just highlight it here, that's this intersection right here. You can see my cursor moving. We're proposing a signal there. The existing signal is at Doris Drive right here. And so, and then what you see in yellow is the proposed improvements. And then if I go to the next slide, it's a little bit more zoomed in, showing the alternatives So the next area that we looked at is actually adding capacity to North Elkhorn Road up by Tyson, and it's basically from ML King Drive. Oh, I'm sorry. Let me back up. So one of the things that I want to point out is that we're also looking at some spot improvements. So this slide just got put into a little bit of wrong order, but one of the two areas we're also looking at is intersection spot improvements at US Highway 63 and Dunkerton Road. And so what that would do is we'd add a different type of configuration at that intersection to allow better traffic flow and a safer site distance and so forth. So we're looking at some of those alternatives at that intersection, as well as East Donald Street and North Elkhorn Road. And so we're actually, those are the two intersections that we're kind of looking at, improved safety improvements at those two intersections. And so the next slide just shows, you know, and I think in your handouts here is that you do have, for some reason, the slide must have gotten deleted, but there is a slide in there showing the improvements to North Elkhorn Road. And so that would be capacity improvements basically from ML King Drive up through the railroad. And there's another railroad, it's the UPRR, Union Pacific Railroad. And right now, the currently is, there's two lanes crossing the Union Pacific. We are looking at adding capacity across those two lanes because there's more transport at that corner, and we'd like to add acceleration and capacity for the truck traffic there. And so that would be another location for capacity improvements. And as you can see, the price tag for those improvements would be approximately 2.3 million for that alternative. And so the next step up is to look at actual alternatives that are partial or new alignments. And one of the first ones we look at is the extension of Plaza Drive and Elkhorn Road. And so as you can see on the screen, is that we've got basically extending Plaza Drive over the top of Dubuque Road and the railroad to remove that, remove an intersection and remove the conflict with the CN Railroad. And then it comes back into Elkhorn Road on its current alignment now. And so there would be a bridge over the top of Dubuque Road and the CN Railroad, and then a connection to Lafayette Road on the north side. And so the advantage is that it provides a great separation, and it bypasses Elkhorn and Dubuque Road intersection. And so then what this does is that funnels a lot of the traffic into the Evansdale area, and then there's some impacts to developable property, particularly to the property on the southwest corner of Plaza Drive and Dubuque Road. And so that, as you can see, the price tags for some of these alternatives goes up once you look at partial realignments. And then this is kind of a zoomed-in slide of that. The next alternative would be a little different. It provides a little bit better traffic flow, but it's very similar in nature to the extension that we showed earlier. But the main advantage of this one is that it does provide better traffic flow and removes an intersection. And so a lot of times, we heard trucks don't like stoplights. So what we did with this alternative is that we removed an intersection and allowed a little better traffic flow, and it's basically providing some slip ramps and just allows better access to, due to the removal of the intersection. That was a little bit higher price tag because of the extra bridge. And then the next alternative is basically the same as what's out there, except we do provide an overpass or a bridge over the CN Railroad. And what it does is that it provides an intersection at Dubuque Road and CN, or Dubuque Road and Plaza Drive. And so that's where the, basically the intersection where it is today, but we would raise everything up and allow it to go over the top of the CN Railroad. And again, that comes with a little higher price tag, but it basically, the biggest advantage with this one is it just removes the conflict with the railroad, but it still has the same level of intersections and so forth as is out there today. And then another one that we looked at is because of the traffic, and now this alternative would be in conjunction with those previous alternatives, we'd have to connect to something that would be an extension of Plaza Drive, would be a Canard improvement, Canard Road improvement. And it would basically take the Raymond Road and swing it over to the new alternatives that we're looking at going north. And so again, this funnels the traffic to Evansdale Drive, but it does remove the conflict with a farm-to-market road through the downtown Raymond area. And so it moves that farm-to-market road over and up to Canard, and then connects to the, to the future extension of Plaza Drive. And again, that would be an additional 6.4 million. So not only did we look at the south area, we did have some alternatives looking north and trying to provide access. So one of the areas that we're looking at is going to the middle of the industrial area, where Northeast Drive is today, and basically extending Northeast Drive and swinging it over to Sage Road, up to Dunkerton Road, and then over to Dunkerton Road over to US Highway 63. And I think everybody's aware is that the interchange for Highway 218 is on Wopsey, Cedar Wopsey Road, but that would be an extension of another three miles north from Dunkerton Road, just so you know. So one of the things that we are aware of is that we'd like to be able to, you know, complete that nice loop, but it's up there always. So this would be an improvement to the middle of the industrial area and then provide better access from the north. So prioritization, we're kind of looking at that. One of the things we want to look at is basically prioritizing the improvements. So we go with the low-hanging fruit, is to actually improve the capacity out there at the two locations that I talked about, is Evansdale Drive, North Elkhorn Road, and then looking at spot improvements at the two intersections I described earlier. So what are some of the funding sources that we have out there? So like I said, this is, we've got a ways to go on this before we would actually start moving any dirt or anything like that on these alternatives. But some of the things that we're looking at for possible funding is Iowa Clean Air Attainment Program, and that grant program is really geared towards providing enhanced freight infrastructure. So that's why we kind of like that one, because that's exactly what we're doing. We have the obvious one is the STPG program, which the county utilizes today on various projects. And then we also have the build discretionary grants that are out there, and that's similar to the Tiger Grant that was, you know, in years past. It's a very competitive program. You have to have a very, very detailed application into the federal government to, and then get your legislatures behind you. It's a kind of a tough one to go for, but this one would score well because one of the things I also look at is partnerships between private and public entities. And this corridor lends itself to those partnerships because of the large industry that would benefit from improved access out there. And so that's one of the things that we're looking at as well. And then obviously, there's always a little bit of local funding that's needed on that one. And so I do want to point out that we do have a website that you can go to to gather more information, and it's shown there in your handout. We are going to be presenting to a public information meeting on September 20th at Pointer Elementary in Evansdale, and that'll be from 4:30 to 6:00 on September 20th. And then I just want to point out that we're working on the final report, and that'll be completed here in the fall and winter of 2018 here. So with that, I can address a few questions if you'd like to ask. And one of the things I forgot to introduce is Kyle Durant is here from Intercog. He's instrumental and been assisting me the whole way, so I'd like to recognize him here today, too.
Work was completed on these roads. Who would be the ownership of each segment of the roads?
So there is a jurisdiction. Obviously, there is a portion of all of these projects that are in various jurisdictions. And so one of the things that we did try to identify is that any future grant would be a partnership. And so, you know, that actual makeup on who would be responsible for which portion, generally, if the project is in your jurisdiction, you would be responsible. But in this case, I believe there's a good opportunity for partnerships between the communities and the county to go after these together as opposed to being on your own on these, depending on the project. Maybe a spot improvement or a smaller-scale type thing would lend itself towards that partnership, but obviously, these larger alternative alignments would lend itself to more of a partnership than just lone-wolfing it based on where your boundaries are. So, you know, that hasn't been made up. There would have to be agreements made and so forth. But that's why that I think it's good that all of the communities are together on this to start with. And I think it's, that's what we want to keep on going forward as a partnership as opposed to saying, we got to solve this by ourselves. I think it's got to be together, so.
Mark, is this meeting on the 20th, is that really from an educational or informative standpoint, or are you seeking input from residents?
We always seek input. So yes, we will be seeking input and their comments on these alternatives.
Well, I'm assuming there'll be some advertising of this probably available to other businesses that weren't interviewed?
Yes, we are going to be doing some advertising. We're going to actually have some flyers produced, and then we're looking at the idea of mailings, but that's kind of hard to do. So I think the main thing we're going to be focusing in on is advertising in the media and on websites and Facebook, that type of thing.
Your timeline to implement or make a decision on which proposal you would prefer?
So we, like I said, we're going to have some recommendations in the final report. So the next step would be doing an environmental document to come up with a preferred alternative for the, for like a new alignment or a separate alignment. And so that would be, you know, that'd be another five years down the road, and then another five years to actually implement what we're looking at. So, you know, a rough timeline for anything moving out there is 10 to 15 years. And so that's why we want to look at a phased approach, where we're looking at some of the smaller improvements first, and then we're looking at some of these new, larger alternatives.
We've been looking at this for 10-plus years already. Seems like a long time.
I know.
Implement something that is probably a real need.
What was the overall response from the businesses that you interviewed?
They were very enthusiastic about getting something done. They're, they are concerned with the amount of access. They want that improved access to these highway corridors from the northeast industrial area. So yes, they are, they were very willing to talk with us. They were excited to have us. And Deere was very, they had a committee of about 20 people when we did their interview, and it was, it was kind of cool. I mean, we had this huge boardroom with about, you know, 20 other people involved. We had about, I don't know, maybe four or five of us, and we're giving them information, asking questions, trying to gather as much information on how they move their product. So, yeah, they're very interested in trying to assist in this manner, so.
Any other questions?
It seemed like it would be important to remove the conflict with the railroad and Dubuque Road.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is receive project updates from department heads and elected officials. Next is receive project updates from department heads and elected officials.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas County Engineer.
Morning.
I just wanted to add on to what Mark was saying that a few of the, he did tell you how the study was also including those routes north of Waterloo, for example. High 218 coming north, there are many, every day, there are many trucks that come with hogs that are headed for the Tyson's facility. They come on 218 or 63, and they're, they're using that Cedar Wopsey Road between 218 and Highway 63. And that's what we're surfacing next year. We are widening that road to, because we do, we have seen an uptick in the traffic along that route. And then we are considering, like Mark suggested, upgrades at Dunkerton Road and Elk Run Road, that, that intersection. Possibly in our five-year plan, we may incorporate a turn lane, a right turn lane going from eastbound to southbound in that corridor. So these are some smaller spot improvements that we'll be looking at. They don't have much of an environmental impact, but we can more easily incorporate those in our five- to 10-year plan. And we'll be keeping you in the loop on those.
Kathy, have you?
Yeah.
Made any projections that, didn't move forward with this type of a improvement? What would cost the county to maintain those roads that are impacted by truck traffic? I know you don't have that figured, but will you be looking at what the potential cost would be to county to not take any action on this?
We can take a look at that. Yes, I don't have a good answer for you today on that question, but we can definitely take a look at that.
Perhaps when you're looking at your five-year plan?
Yes.
You could look at what, what would be the cost if we had to improve our roads without, without the partnership?
Right, yeah. So that's all I want to say this morning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Any other department heads and elected officials? Moving on, minutes approved for August 14, 2018.
Move.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, consent agenda by resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Moved to second, any discussion on any of the items? This resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Ms. Leyland?
Yes.
Mr. Magzman?
Yes.
Mr. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is reports, motion to receive a place on file BHC Blackhawk County Extension 7, reconciliation statement affidavits and published report agricultural extension and education operating fund July 1, 2018.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion on this item? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Contracts and agreements, this resolution at the best bid submitted by Encore Energy Dubuque, Iowa for natural gas transportation services for the jail effective November 1st, 18 through October 31st, 19, and to hedge gas for November through April to the fixed rate not to exceed $4, and the chair to sign the same as recommended by Rory Givens, maintenance superintendent. So moved.
Second.
Mr. Givens? Good morning, Board. Rory Givens, maintenance superintendent.
Morning.
So this is for the jail transportation gas. It's a, it's a little unique because after last year, we were notified by several third-party vendors wishing to be able to provide a bid for providing natural gas transportation services. Unlike in the past, we've always utilized Mid-American Energy Services for this service. And so we reached out to our local Mid-American representatives, and they provided us with a list of third-party vendors. We did certify, or we did double-check to make sure that these vendors were certified with the state of Iowa, which they were. We received three bids for these services. We had a very detailed RFP. We thoroughly went through that RFP, and we determined that Encore Energy was, met our needs based on the RFP, and we're seeking for that approval today. That not to exceed $4 is for that timeframe in the winter months for the jail, just like we do every year. We lock in at that rate. So what we'll do is after today's meeting, we will call in and verify where that rate's at. As long as it's not over that $4 mark, we will go ahead and lock that in. Then I will report back to the board what that final number was for those months in the winter time.
What are you currently paying?
Well, last year, we locked in at $3.95, I believe. I think that was indicated on there.
So approval today is you're not going to exceed the $4?
Correct, for that lock-in rate for those months of April, or November through April. And then also, it is signing an agreement with Encore Energy to provide our transportation gas effective November 1st through October 31st, 2019.
Have you ever had an agreement with anybody else over the years?
We do. We have an existing agreement with Mid-American Energy Services, which we have to provide a notice to get out of that agreement, and that notice has to be provided by September 2nd of 2018. So.
And we've always dealt with Mid-American in the past?
It's Mid-American Energy Services, and then there's Mid-American Energy. So it is a little confusing given the same name, but the two are different entities. And the way this works is basically Encore would provide that natural gas to the city gate, which there's two locations in this area. From the city gate, then Mid-American Energy picks that up and provides it to our facility. So this is just for jail transportation for large volume.
Any other questions? This is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Mr. Magzman?
Yes.
Ms. Leyland?
Yes.
Mr. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is a resolution that the proposal from AHTS Architects Waterloo, Iowa, to amount of $7,500 for professional design services for Pine Crest restroom remodel project be approved as recommended by Rory Givens, maintenance superintendent.
So moved.
Second.
This is for professional services for the two lower-level or first-floor level restrooms over at our Pine Crest facility. These restrooms, we're requesting to be redesigned to fully meet, to be handicapped accessible restrooms for that facility. So again, this is the professional services. We took it out for bid. We did have four people attend, or four companies attend the pre-bid meeting. We did receive four proposals. We thoroughly went through all of those proposals, and we are asking that the board approve.
Just no bid?
Yes, they are. Yes, they are. AHTS Architects located here in Waterloo.
Any other questions for Rory? This is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Ms. Leyland?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. Magzman?
Yes.
Mr. Little?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is a resolution that's a statement of completion and final acceptance of work project hot mix asphalt resurfacing on Raymond Road, one quarter mile south of Donald Street intersection to Donald Street intersection be approved, and direct the chair to sign for same in the amount of $153,859.37.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion on this item?
Yes, as you recall, we talked about last week how the Dewar paving project has been complete on Raymond Road. It's in much nicer service. It had last been resurfaced approximately, I believe, 36 or 37 years ago, so it was time to resurface that. It turned out very nicely. I would recommend that you accept the work and then we sign this, you're able to sign the statement of completion then. Aspro was about 6% under their contract price, and all work was completed in conformance with the standard plans and the specifications.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Any other questions? This is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Mr. Little?
Yes.
Ms. Leyland?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. Magzman?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is a motion at the request for purchase of capital equipment submitted by Kathy Nicholas, County Engineer, direct the chair to sign for same in four swivel hoist rings in the amount of $1,747 from West Tech Rigging Supply.
So moved.
Second.
And what were these going to be used for, Kathy?
So these are anchor, an anchor mechanism that we're placing in our slabs. These are our bridge slabs that we're building out at Longfellow in the winter months so that we can haul the slabs out to our new bridge locations in the summer. We did budget, I believe, $4,000 for, we need, we actually need eight of these. I think this should be, state eight for the 1747. We typically are hauling out, it takes four panels to make a bridge. We can haul several of them during the day, but we can, we replace a threaded bolt connection into the slab as we're, as we're building it, forming up the steel, et cetera. Then we replace the swivel hoist anchor into the beam on the day we need to move it, and we would have four points, one at each corner of the slab. The slabs weigh approximately 20,000 pounds each, so we're looking for something that can hold approximately 5,000 pounds each. And if we have eight of them, we'll be able to readily move two slabs at once and then go transfer these mechanisms. So we are currently using old crane cable to, we just put loops in the slab as it's poured. We are running out of crane cable. It's expensive, and we felt that this was a safer, possibly a safer way to move these slabs. So we're asking that we be allowed to spend the $1,750 to purchase these mechanisms.
And these were included in the budget, I believe, too?
Yes, they were budgeted for FY19, yes.
So this price covers eight?
Eight.
Yes, yeah, because they were approximately $218 apiece, I believe.
I guess, yeah. Motion reflect the, I heard seen eight.
Yeah.
Swivels.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next, a motion at the personnel requisition for budget administrator, full-time replacement with the start date of September 3rd, and the county engineer's office be approved as recommended by Catherine Nicholas, County Engineer.
So moved.
Move to second, Kathy?
So this is a replacement. Our current budget administrator is resigning and going to work somewhere else. It's a needed position that individual prepares two budgets, one for the county, one for the DOT, the code of Iowa requirements. They're helping throughout the year with all types of budgeting questions. Every agenda item where we're spending money goes through this person and making sure that we're staying within our budgeted, budget for the year.
Any other questions for Kathy? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Motion to accept the resignation from Kath Christine King of Blackhawk County Civil Service Commission effective October 31st, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion on this item? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Motion at the travel request submitted by Susan Deaton, Finance Director, and Debbie Bungar, Human Resource Director, be approved and direct the chair to sign for same as $50 for Dana Lattick, Administrative Assistant, to, and no cost for Amanda Fessimire, HR Specialist, to attend the 2018 Lean Government Exchange in Des Moines, Iowa, scheduled for August 30th, 2018.
So moved. Second.
Move to second, any discussion on this item?
Yeah, I just wanted to quickly note just that, that the board kind of came to me and wanted to, I guess, identify other opportunities for county representatives, employees, elected officials to attend lean events and conferences. And this is the second one put on by Iowa Lean Consortium, targeted pretty much strictly to public entities. So I think it's a really good opportunity to get more people involved at the county in lean.
Was this offered to other departments?
Yep.
And we only got yourself and Dana?
No, we got three others, but they're under other elected, so Sandy, Sandy Smith with the recorders going, Billy Hess of Under the Auditor, our payroll accounting manager, and then Karen Dowell under County Social Services, under Bob Lincoln's group. So we have five that will be going at a cost of $200 for five of us to attend. And we do plan to use transportation out of the Health Department to travel down there. So hopefully next year, there were some other people that were interested, it just scheduling conflicts didn't work out. People like in Maintenance, Conservation, so I'm hoping next year.
Is this just a yearly thing, or they run it more than once a year?
So far, it's just once a year. They've only been able to generate enough interest. They have about 170 people going right now, and, and it's about the same as it was last year.
What's the goal of all these people that are going? What's the goal for the future? To, to take over leadership role in the lean program?
Yeah, in their own departments, ideally. That's, we've had a lot of success with that in the Auditor's Office. Billy's been instrumental in looking at areas of improvement and streamlining processes with her staff. Conservation has also been exposed to that. So ideally, this is just, again, getting more people exposed so that as a whole, it's just becoming more part of our culture that we're thinking a little bit more about how can we be efficient? How can we improve our processes internally, externally, providing to our residents? So yeah, absolutely. There's still opportunity for us to, if departments want to work with me, but it's been tough moving into HR role. It's been pretty busy.
It's been stagnant since you went down. I know you were pretty active when you were on the Board of Supervisors, but since you moved downstairs, other circumstances, has the program been pretty stagnant throughout the county?
Yeah, since I've come back from maternity leave, that was a big pause in that. I know there was some interest from the Sheriff's Office to do a Kaizen event, but it was scheduling that didn't quite work out. So I don't know if stagnant's the right word, but it just hasn't quite, I haven't been able to devote as much time to it, being in HR.
Well, I, I know that, but I mean, the involvement of the other departments that you had worked with, were they carrying on with the lean program?
As far as I know, Conservation is still, has a part of their safety audit. They have a five-S audit. And like I said, in the Auditor's Office, they have been, been doing a lot of things to improve their processes. Apart from that, those are two, my, and then HR, we, our own department, Debbie's been very supportive of lean processes, so, but I haven't gone out to really, any other departments to be more on a one-on-one basis to look at their processes and say, you know.
But there has been audits?
Yeah, they do a safety audit. My.
A lean audit?
It's, it's not specifically a lean audit, no. It was just to look for, in their workspace. It kind of goes hand-in-hand with safety, that they have a clean environment and clean workspace, putting things back to where they belong. That was Vern's plan.
I think getting these people exposed in the five that you're talking about going again, I think that's all part of us, like I say, kind of continuing the momentum, so that, great.
Right, yeah, I think at this point, you know, it was, I mean, I could help kind of kick it off, but then eventually get it to the departments where they're doing it more on their own, and I just be more like a resource.
That's the goal.
Yeah, and that's, that's kind of where this is leading us. So this particular event, it focuses on, or this conference will have, it's like three channels where they have initiating, growing, and sustaining in lean. So we have people that have not done anything with lean. So people like, whether that's Sandy in the Recorder's Office or Karen, so they'll kind of be focused more on, how do I get started? There's the growing phase, which is where maybe people like myself or Billy will be at, where they've actually done some process improvements already. And then there's the sustaining element, and that's probably where, I mean, ideally, that's where we're moving to. So you first, you know, you start lean, you improve your processes, but then how do you actually maintain it and sustain it going forward, so.
But we, Amanda, we have done some projects, right, in the past?
Yeah, we've done a project with the onboarding module, which it has not been kicked off quite yet, but.
But I'd like to see then in the future is when they do these projects, evidence that they're sustaining it?
Right.
Rather than having the project and then go back to their old ways?
Yep.
So I'm not sure how you're showing that, whether it be through an audit or visual, but I'd like to see some proof that we're sustaining when we do a project.
Okay.
So we're at least, we're, may not be moving ahead quite as fast, but we're maintaining what we've done already.
Oh, and that makes sense. And that is something that we can definitely look at, and I can talk with Conservation about some of their audits and then.
Sounds like they're ahead of everybody.
Yeah, I would say our, there are certain areas that, like I said, we haven't even gotten to. There's a lot of opportunities still, definitely, and hopefully with taking these employees to this type of conference and next year, getting more people involved, that they can see in their own work areas where they can make improvements and, and like you said, then sustain those, so.
I think part of it was an educational format. I think so many were unfamiliar of what that really meant.
Yep.
And I know that's when Conservation kind of stepped out and was eager to be kind of the pilot.
Yep.
For it, to see how it would work, so.
This conference is one of them, especially for what you get for it, how much you're paying for it, it's really low cost, and it's a very non-threatening environment. It's targeted to. It's targeted to public entities, those that are providing services. A lot of times when I've gone to other lean conferences, it's very heavily manufacturing, and that's difficult. That's hard for our organization to, to really comprehend and to, and to make sense of it because we're not building products here, we're providing a service. So, yeah, absolutely, it's definitely educational. I'm hoping that they can make some good connections with other counties, other cities, to say, what do you do in your, you know, in your Health Department, in your record-keeping? What has worked for you, what hasn't? And so it's definitely a good resource, but it, yeah, just an annual event, and hopefully we can.
Yeah, lean was actually started by manufacturing, that's where it came from.
Right, yep. So it's, it's definitely different in the education, government, healthcare realms, but it's, it's still something that can be useful, and, and that's what this Lean Government Exchange is really created for, for entities like us, to show that we can improve our processes and.
I think the more people we get involved, the better our program's going to be.
Right, yep. So hopefully next year, we can just, I'll probably look to include people, obviously, that aren't from these departments that are going this time around, and then we'll just continue to expand that knowledge.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. Amanda, thank you, and, you know, it's like Mr. Little said, we have to incorporate this in our daily activities and become part of our way we do business, but the bottom line is it, it improves our ability to serve the citizens here in Blackhawk County, and I think that's, that's what we need to focus on. There is opportunities, and I know you've taken advantage of some of those, to be part of the other lean community here within Blackhawk County. They have what they call lean coffee, and then you can, perhaps if there's other individuals within the county that'd be interested, you see a cross-section of those that are not just manufacturing, although they are there, but other smaller companies that are involved in the lean program.
Absolutely, yep. That's a great recommendation. So there are definitely plenty of local things, too. I know I just had invited our Health Department Director to a change in management culture that was put on by the Iowa Lean Consortium Cedar Valley one here. So there are definitely things that, outside of just like an annual conference like this, but whether it's a lean coffee networking events, things like that, that I'll continue to kind of seek, people, you know, from other departments to attend. And, and, yeah, well, this is just one step in that direction, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a motion, a second on the floor. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Any reports or information from the board? I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.